Folks, we're back. This is Steve Sanson and Jim Jonas for another episode of Veterans in Politics. Today, we have Las Vegas City Councilman and Mayor Pro Tem, a second time, Stavros Anthony, who's also a candidate for Clark County.
Commission District 3.
I wanted Jim to finish it off for me. For Clark County Commission District C.
C.
C as in cat. Mayor Pro Tem Anthony, how you doing today, sir?
I'm doing great. Thanks for having me on, and I just want to say thanks for endorsing me for
Absolutely.
Clark County Commission District C. I'm honored to have the veterans endorsement.
Absolutely. Tell us about you and your boundary lines.
So, I came out here in 1980 to join the Las Vegas Metro Police Department.
How come you're not sheriff?
You know, I did 29 years with Metro. That's a lot of law enforcement. It was time to do something different.
You know what? I still, it's always in the back of my head. I always ask myself, how come Stavros Anthony don't run for sheriff?
And you are one of many people that have asked me that and encouraged me to run for sheriff. It just, you know, opportunities, the stars have to line up, things have to come together. That never came together, but...
How old are you, Councilman?
I am 63.
Okay, well, we still have some time to work on you.
Well, I'm running for the Clark County Commission right now. That's my goal, and we'll see what life happens after that.
Please continue.
Okay. So, anyway, I came out here. I joined the police department, did 29 years with Metro, 10 years as a police officer, five as a sergeant, four as a lieutenant. My last 10 years, I was a captain. Retired in 2009. In between those 29 years, I went back to UNLV, got my masters in political science. I went back later, got my PhD in sociology from UNLV.
So, you're a doctor?
I am. Nobody calls me doctor, though.
We're gonna start.
I also went to the FBI National Academy in Quantico for 10 weeks. I went to the Southern Police Institute in Louisville, Kentucky for 10 weeks. That's another police leadership school. I ran for the Board of Regents twice, and I won, so I served on the Board of Regents for seven years. And then in 2009, the opportunity came up to run for the Las Vegas City Council representing Ward 4. It was an open seat. Larry Brown was termed out at the time. So, I filed. There were six of us that filed, and I ended up winning by 10 votes. So, every vote counts. I tell that to everybody. So, I have, there's 10 people that I owe. I don't know who they are exactly, but I owe those 10 people to show up and vote. I ran for my second term and received 78% of the vote. Ran for my third term, another about 78% of the vote. I was Mayor Pro Tem during Carolyn Goodman's first four years as mayor. And then when she won reelection, she selected Lois Arcanian as the Mayor Pro Tem. And once Lois Arcanian was termed out and left, she eventually asked me to be Mayor Pro Tem again. So, I'm currently the Mayor Pro Tem for the city of Las Vegas, and it's been great representing Ward 4. I'm termed out. I think, I love term limits. I think all elected offices should have term limits. I'm termed out. Another opportunity has come up to run for the Clark County Commission District C. Again, it's an open seat.
Who was in there?
Larry Brown. Larry Brown, he did...
You're just trying to knock Larry Brown.
I'm following him. He did three terms on the city council, three terms on the county commission. So, I plan on basically doing the same thing. So, I filed as the Republican nominee, and I didn't have anybody file against me. So, I didn't have a primary. The Democrats, there were six people that filed on the Democrat side. One individual won, so coming in November, I will, I'm the Republican nominee, running against the Democrat nominee in November, and I'm asking for everybody's vote. And I plan on taking all my experience in public safety and local government and passing it on to the Clark County Commission and making sure we have a great city and a great Southern Nevada to live in.
Well, it sounds like you're well-versed. You're just fully rounded. I mean, cop, an educator, regent, city council. It sounds like you've done it all. How come you just don't put your hat up and put your feet in some nice blue water and just have somebody throw grapes at you?
You know, that's a great question. I could probably move to Greece and retire there in comfort, but...
I was thinking about a tropical island.
Well, I'm Greek, so I'd probably end up in Greece. But as you mentioned, you know, I'm 63 years old. That's young still. I'm not really ready to retire completely. I really, I really love public service. That's what I've done my entire life. I enjoy doing it. I know what I'm doing. I know how to think strategically. I just enjoy helping people and making communities safe and better places to live. And, you know, my wife probably doesn't want me to retire because I'd be hanging around the house too much. So, I've been married 40 years.
Wow, congratulations.
Two kids and two grandkids.
What do your children do?
My oldest daughter's a nurse, and my younger daughter...
Two daughters, huh?
I have two daughters, yeah.
No sons?
No, we had two daughters.
Would you adopt me or Jim?
You guys are too big. I wouldn't mind adopting a little baby, but you guys are too big to be adopting. But they're both, they're both great, great kids, absolutely great kids. And my oldest daughter's married, and she has two of my grandkids, and I've been blessed.
Are they all here in Nevada?
No, one's in Boston, and the other one's in New York City.
Okay.
So, but really, to answer your question, I just enjoy this. I enjoy talking to people and spending time, finding out what's important to people in their particular neighborhood or their particular community or what's important to them when it comes to owning a business and how local government can help. I really like local government because you can really have an impact on people's lives.
Took me a while to get Jim to realize that.
Well, Councilman, first off, thank you very much for coming on. I'm glad you said that because it was, and Steve is right. It took me a while to come around to being really solely, not solely, but more focused on local races. But I get, I get asked this question a lot from people. They're like, hey, you know, you're a young guy. You've been politically active for a number of years, involved in different things. I'm thinking about being politically active, too. Like, if I was to run for an office, what would be your suggestion? I always say city council. That's the first thing I think of. I'm like, that's where the rubber meets the road. You're fixing potholes. You're putting up stop signs. You're involved in zoning. And there's just a lot of issues on the city council that people don't realize how important it is. But now, if you could do me a favor, if you could explain the difference to the viewers and listeners, this next step. So, you're going from city councilman to now county commissioner. What's the difference between being a city councilman and a county commissioner?
Well, in the full scheme of things, there really isn't any difference. As you mentioned, the city council deals with local issues. It deals with neighborhood issues. It deals with very specific issues that people are interested in on their block, on where they live. It also deals with zoning, zoning, planning, things like that. Clark County Commission basically does the same thing. The difference is the jurisdiction. The city council deals with just the city of Las Vegas, about 600,000 people. The Clark County Commission deals with the entire county, and the entire county, Clark County, I believe is bigger than the state of Rhode Island. So, it goes all the way up to Mesquite, all the way down to Laughlin, all the way to the edge of Prump and the east and the west. So, it's a very big jurisdictional area. And even though we have cities, Las Vegas, North Las Vegas, Mesquite, a big part of it is the unincorporated county. So, if you were, example, you were to go to Sahara and Decatur. If you go north of Sahara, you're in the city of Las Vegas. City council takes care. If you go south of Sahara, all the way down to Sandy Valley, that's county. And the county commission is responsible for local issues, neighborhood issues, zoning, for all those. So, it's basically the same job, and it's kind of like, I mean, you pretty much nailed it, what the city council does, but it really comes from a philosophy in law enforcement called the broken windows theory. You've probably heard of that. And it came out of law enforcement where, you know, when you join a police department, what you're hoping to do is the, you know, arrest felons and robbers and murders and getting high-speed pursuits and, you know, the run and gun and exciting stuff you see on television. But there was some research done, and really, what's just as important to people when it comes to public safety is what's called this broken windows theory. And basically, what it says is that if somebody goes into a neighborhood on your street, your block, and breaks a window in a house, and nobody fixes the window, what does that say about the neighborhood? They probably don't care about it much, you know? They'll let it go a little bit. Well, what happens is, if you don't fix that window, then another window gets broken, and then you get junk cars and shopping carts, squatters, graffiti. And then all the good people start moving out, and the criminals start moving in, and the neighborhood goes to crap. So, the theory is, you fix the window every time it's broken. And that's really the job of local government, is to fix those windows, is to take care of graffiti, shopping carts, junk cars. If a house has squatters in it, to go in and shut the house up. So, you take care of those things, and I'll tell you, people appreciate that.
And don't forget meth labs.
Meth labs. There you go. And, you know, and not to knock other officials, but, you know, you're not going to call the president for that. You're not going to call your senator or congressman for that. Maybe you would call your state assembly person or...
Or Guido.
Or, yeah, you could call, Guido would help out, yeah. But they don't really have staff. So, I have the full support of the city of Las Vegas behind me with code enforcement. And I can come out, I can send people out and take care of that. And that's what you do at the Clark County Commission. So, I'm just gonna do at the county what I've done the last 10 years at the city. And that's, is that, is public safety, broken windows theory, making sure zoning fits in neighborhoods, making sure that if somebody wants to build something, they're talking to the neighbors that were there first and coming up with compromises. So, it's basically the same job.
You know, I gotta watch the time because, Councilman Anthony, I could talk to you all day. And one of the things I want to talk to you about is that I live on this one street, and speed limit is 25 miles an hour, 50, 60 miles an hour coming down. And it's in a rural area. There's no lights. There's no, there's no, there's no city lights. How could I get me some bumps, some of those? What was that called? Road bumps?
Humps or bumps or humps?
Humps. How could I, what's the procedure for anybody to say, hey, you know, I want to improve my neighborhood? I don't want my children, one of my kids to or my pets to get ran over because somebody is not doing the speed limit. How could I get those bumps in the road?
That's a great question. I get that question all the time. So, the thing, what you're talking about is basically, there's two kinds. There's a speed bump, which is the, you know, it's like, it's like six inches. It's very high.
Like what you'd see in a parking lot.
In a parking lot. Or then you have the humps, which are maybe, you know, six, six feet long. They're not...
Whichever works.
Yeah, they're, they're, they're not going to smack your car as much as a bump. So, people, people have called me on that, and this is what happens. Number one, if it looks like it's a valley, something to think about, then we have, first of all, we have to do a traffic study to actually find out if there are speeders on that roadway. Because you might be sitting on your porch and you're watching speeders, but there only may be a couple. So, you really can't justify it. So, you would find out, what is the speed on that? And if, if it is, people are speeding, then the second thing you have to do is you have to talk to public safety. Fire department.
Public safety.
Primarily fire department, because the issue is, if you put those in, it's going to slow down ambulances. It's going to slow down fire trucks. So, is this, are these humps going to slow down emergency vehicles to a point where it's going to cause a public safety issue in that neighborhood? So...
But I thought speeding was a public safety issue.
Public speeding, that's what you have to weigh. So, we would actually do a study.
Okay.
And if it looks like that we should put those in, and there's plenty of places in Las Vegas where we have those, then it would be brought to the city council for approval. So, the city council would have to vote for it.
Does it go before planning or no?
That's a good question. I don't know if it goes to planning first. It may go to planning and then the city council, or it may go directly to the city council. So, anybody that is interested, but the other thing to keep in mind is, your neighbors may not want...
Who do I, who do I approach first?
You would, usually, the way I've seen it is, they'll usually call me up and say, hey, Councilman Anthony, there's a lot of speeders on my street. I'd like you to consider speed humps. And they say, okay, well, let me put the process in place. So, we would put the process in place and see where it goes.
So, you need to go to your city council person first?
You could actually go to the traffic engineering section of the city of Las Vegas and ask them to do a study also. You could do that. And then they would let us know that they decided to do a study. So, there have been places where we put humps, not too many with bumps, but there's places where we put them up. There's other places where this is not a good idea.
And I'm gonna throw questions at you because this is all surrounding what you do.
Right.
This is what you do, okay? What happens if someone has a power pole, electric power pole in their backyard with all kinds of electrical wires going to the power pole from the house, and it's an older house, and trees are going all entwined in there? How could you get Nevada Energy to bury the electrical wire or maybe do an inspection to make sure that these things are not a safety hazard?
This doesn't sound like a hypothetical question.
How would you go about doing that, Councilman Anthony?
They hit the curb my pad? Come on now.
How would you go about doing that, Councilman Anthony?
So, there's two things you could do. Number one is, you just call NV Energy directly.
NV Energy.
Go NV Energy and ask them to take a look at it.
Gotcha.
Some people will say, hey, I know Councilman Anthony. This is in his ward. I'm going to call him directly. If I get that question, I'm going to call NV Energy, and I'm going to ask them...
So, again, go to the councilman in that area.
That's, that's why on my business card, there's my cellphone and my email. So, people call, people would call me and say, hey, my next-door neighbor's got all these wires coming out. It doesn't look safe. Can you send somebody out? We would, we may send code enforcement out from the city just to take an initial look at it.
Okay, yeah, yeah.
And they may be able to handle it, yeah.
Yeah.
Or, or they would call in, code enforcement would call NV Energy out. So, those are the things absolutely we should be looking at. If a constituent calls them and says, I have maybe an unsafe situation over here, that's, again, that's what local government does. You're not gonna probably call your state legislator. You're not going to call your federal elected official. That's why they would call me.
You're not gonna call your secretary of state.
No. No, that's why I like local government, because you can actually, and then once that's resolved, they can say, you know what? Here's an elected official that actually, I contacted and he helped me out.
I got another question.
And that's a good thing.
With that, could, could this homeowner charge, is there an easement? Or could this homeowner charge NV Energy, hey, your pole is in my backyard, okay? So, you need to start paying some rent. Or, I want to get like X amount of dollars a month off my power bill because your pole's in my backyard. That backyard is my property. You ever heard anybody talk about anything?
I've never heard that, probably because when the, when the property lines are initially drawn out, the utilities pretty much know where to put the poles, where to put their utilities. So, it's probably, they've already worked out those easement issues. So, I have never, I've never heard of that being an issue before, where utility has something on private property. If that did come up, they would probably just come out and move it.
Really?
Probably, yeah. But that's never come up.
And these are questions, folks, that people just need to address to their, to their local, local elected officials. What are your boundary lines, Councilman?
So, for Ward 4, I'll give you the kind of the...
No, 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 not for Ward 4, for Clark County Commission C.
For Clark County Commission District C, let's start with the Costco. I always like to start with the Costco at Charleston and 215, because a lot of people go there. So, Costco is the southern boundary line. So, you would start from them there and just go north. Go north all the way through Summerlin, Desert Shores, Sun City, Summerlin, Painted Desert, all the way up to Centennial Hills, Lone Mountain, Coal Creek, and then Indian Springs. So, if you want a specific boundary, it's Charleston to the south to Decatur, Decatur north to Rancho, Rancho north, where it turns into 95. Take 95 all the way up to Indian Springs, come back around Indian Springs, down to 215, around Mount Charleston, and then come right back down to Charleston. At Mount Charleston.
Is there any Republicans on the current Clark County Commission?
So, that's a great question. So, when I ran for the city council 10 years ago, I was the first Republican elected in about 15 years on the Las Vegas City Council.
Michael J. McDonough was also a councilman.
He was the last one, so about 10 years before that. Today, we have three. On the Clark County Commission, we haven't had a Republican in about 10 years. That's Bruce Woodbury was the last one. So, I plan on being the first Republican elected to the, to the Clark County Commission. It's interesting that really, most local elected officials really don't have a political party attached to their name on the ballot. So, Las Vegas City Council, when I ran three times, I was a Republican, but it didn't say that on the ballot. It was just me against somebody else. This one, I am. So, you know, I'm going to bring my values to the Clark County Commission, and that is, I don't want to reduce taxes. I want to reduce regulations. I want to reduce fees. I want to reduce licensing requirements. I want to make sure law enforcement is the number one, the number one priority on the Clark County Commission, public safety, because that is the number one priority of people that live here, is public safety. They want a safe place to live and a safe place to work. So, I'm going to bring, I've been endorsed by the Nevada Firearms Coalition, so I got an A-plus rating with them, so I'm going to protect our Second Amendment rights. So, I'm really bringing my conservative background to the Clark County Commission, and that's how I'm going to vote. That's how I'm going to react to issues. That's how I'm going to think about policy when I get there.
What boards have you, did you sit on any boards while you were regent?
I sat, I sat on the diversity board for the Board of Regents. I sat on the healthcare board as a regent. So, that was about 15 years ago, so you're checking my memory here.
You know what they say in politics, don't ask a question unless you don't already know the answer.
I just don't remember the answer.
Now, while being a city council member, what boards did you sit on?
So, when I first started, I was on the Southern Nevada, the Southern Nevada Health District. I sat on their board. I'm not on that board anymore, but I was on that. I have, the entire time I've been on the city council, I've been on the fiscal affairs committee for Metro. So, I've been responsible for their budget. I'm currently on the Regional Transportation Commission. So, right now, I'm...
So, you're on NDOT as well?
Well, NDOT is the Nevada Department of Transportation. I'm on the RTC, which is the Regional Transportation Commission. So, the mayor and I are the city council representatives. There's two commission representatives, one from Boulder City and one from Mesquite, and we make up the Regional Transportation Commission. So, I sit on that and fiscal affairs. Those are the two boards I sit on right now.
With the, with the Metro's fiscal, fiscal affairs committee, what have you seen that you think that maybe you should fix or not fix so much, anything?
Well, it's interesting when you, when you say the word fix, because the, when it comes to the fiscal affairs committee, we're responsible for the budget. We, we don't approve strategies. We don't approve where people are deployed. We don't approve training, things like that. We approve the budget. What is going to be the budget for Metro? Obviously, whatever the budget's going to be is what the sheriff has to work with in order to get things done. So, the way it's, the way I look at the budget first is, I want to make sure that Metro has enough money to have two officers per thousand on their department. Plus, I have to take into account, before this virus, 40 million people coming in to make sure they're safe. So, when we, when we craft a budget, we have to make sure that there's money available to make sure we have two officer per thousand, plus enough officers to protect the strip. And that's kind of the starting point. So, back in 2009, that was the Great Recession. You guys all remember that. We took a pretty good dump. All our budgets went downhill, and the way the budget works is roughly 60% comes from the county, 40% comes from the city. The county funds the Clark County Detention Center completely. So, we fund 40%. They do the jail completely. The city doesn't fund the jail.
Have you visited the detention center?
I haven't been in there since my days of arresting people, no.
You could pick up some votes in there.
I don't know. So, when we, when we started in 2009, the budgets went down at Metro. We just didn't have the money. So, we went from two officers per thousand down to 1.7, which doesn't sound like a lot, but it is. They, they didn't, they were down around 800 police officers. It was our job to get, as the recession ended, we started receiving more money. We had to make sure that they received the budget in order to do that. Plus, you know, they have capital outlays, helicopters, things like that. So, that's what we're responsible for, and then the sheriff is the one that deploys it. So, that's what, basically, what it comes down to, yes.
So, I mean, I'm glad you brought it. I'm glad Steve touched on that, and thanks for explaining to the viewers and listeners the 60% and the 40%. Some people get confused on where Metro's money actually comes from. But so, and I know as a former law enforcement individual and someone who obviously has been in government and is currently in government, you've heard all this talk about defunding police. Okay, so, let's say, like, how would, how does the, how does a vote to defund the police even start to begin with? Number one, like, obviously, I'm against that. I think, like, I think maybe we should work at, like, maybe demilitarizing the police a little bit, but as far as defunding the police, I think that's kind of silly. But where would that vote generate from? If you're a county commissioner and you hold 60% of their budget, like, is that something that would start at the county commission level? Would it start at the city level? Would that be a governor's decision? Who would, who would start that process?
That's a great question. The way, the way it would basically work is, Metro's budget is right around $500 million. So, the county funds 60% of that. I'm not sure what that is. 300 million, let's say, city. It's about 150 million, something like that. So, the way, the way defunding police would happen here, and I would, I'm with you, I would fight a tooth and nail. But the way it would actually probably happen is, you would have somebody at the county commission say, hey, we're giving Metro $300 million. I think that's too much. I think we need to cut that by $100 million. And that's one county commissioner. If he or she can get the rest of them to go along with it, then they're cutting Metro's budget by $100 million. They can do that. That's, that's, that is their money to disperse as they want. Same on the city council. If somebody at the city council...
One very pissed-off sheriff, though.
That's, one very pissed-off sheriff, but he, the sheriff has to rely on the city-county for funding. So, you could have a city council that voted, hey, we're going to cut 50 million from the sheriff's budget, and we're going to spend it on this over here. So, that's how it would happen. So far, I have not heard that from anybody. I hope that doesn't happen.
I've just heard other cities that they've talked about it. I don't know.
So, that's what happened in Minnesota, Minneapolis, Minnesota. The city council all agreed, and they cut the budget for the city by quite a bit of money. A couple of them actually wanted to eliminate the police department. Couple of them actually wanted to eliminate the police department.
Oh.
There was one city council person actually discussed.
Open carry for everybody.
Yes, absolutely. They didn't go that far. But one actually championed that cause. The rest of them didn't. But they did cut the police department by quite a bit. And I'll tell you, we do surveys at the city of Las Vegas every year. And the number one priority of people in the city of Las Vegas, and I'll transfer it to the county. I can't say that for a fact, but I can surmise that. The number one priority is I want a safe neighborhood to live in. I want a safe place to take my kids to school. I want a safe place to take my dogs for a walk. That is number one. That's like ninety percent say that is their number one priority. So if somebody tried that here to defund the police, it would be very difficult. But I can't say somebody's not going to try that. In this environment, when the Democratic Party is pushing defunding law enforcement, that may happen here. And it'll be, it would be hopefully uproar from the community that would cause that to go away.
So who sits on the Fiscal Affairs Committee now in the county commission?
So the Fiscal Affairs Committee is made up of two city council persons. So it's me and Cedric Carrier.
On the city, who's there now in the county?
On the county commission side is Larry Brown and Jim Gibson. And then there's a civilian who is the, who also sits on there and is usually the chair.
I like to be the chair. Anyways, Councilman Anthony, more than likely, if and when you do win the county commission, you're probably going to sit on that board as.
Possibly.
How do you guys determine, on civil liabilities, how do you guys determine how much a victim family gets from a civil lawsuit against Metro? How do you determine that?
That's a good question. So what happens is something happens at Metro between a police officer and a citizen, or a corrections officer and a citizen. And something happens, and then there's a lawsuit. And Metro has attorneys on staff, full-time attorneys. And then they have law firms that they contract out with. So they would go through the process of anybody getting sued. So they would, you know, find out what they're being sued for, and then they would go through the process. And they may go to court, and they may take depositions. And it could be that the attorneys there, and they're not talking to the Fiscal Affairs about this. We're not in the loop on this. They just do their normal defending the police department, defending the officer. And if it goes to a full-blown court trial, and there's a jury, and there's a verdict, then there's the verdict. Then if it's against us, we pay out. Most of the time, it doesn't get that far. Most of the time, the attorneys for Metro will negotiate with the attorneys for the plaintiff. And they will come up with some agreement. Let's just say they agree that the plaintiff should get a hundred thousand dollars for what happened. So they can't pay that out. They have to come to the Fiscal Affairs Committee and brief us. And then we vote at a Fiscal Affairs Committee. It's agendaized. It's put on agenda. Pay a settlement for a hundred thousand dollars. It's a public meeting. And then the Fiscal Affairs Committee would vote on paying the hundred thousand dollars. Now, obviously, before that, we're briefed on it. We're told, this is what happened. This is why we're recommending a settlement. This is where it's going to go. And usually, it's one of those things where, you know, if we go to court, there's a good chance we're going to, you know, there's going to be a two, three million dollar judgment. We don't know, but it's not looking that great because of a.
It's a hundred grand.
It was a hundred grand. They want to settle. It goes on the agenda. We vote. The majority of the five decide whether to accept the settlement.
Are those meetings open to the public?
Yes.
Or they are?
Yep. They're posted. They're agendaized. They're open to the public. They're held at Metro's headquarters. They're usually at the end of the month. You can see the agenda beforehand. You can show up at the meeting. There's public comment, so you can make public comment. There's actually two public comments, one at the beginning, one at the end. Yeah.
You've been a police officer for twenty-nine years, and you've been on Las Vegas City Council for what, eight?
Ten.
Twelve, ten.
Ten.
And you sit on the Fiscal Affairs Committee. When was the last time you've been to a police-involved shooting? Have you ever went to any of those, or is it something that you would look at, or?
An officer-involved shooting, I have not been to one as a city councilman. I have not been to one since I retired. When I was on Metro, I went to plenty of them.
Okay.
Yeah.
What type of questions do you ask at a Fiscal Affairs Committee when you look at Metro's budget? Do you, any questions or?
Oh yeah, there's a lot. What happens is, the way it works is.
You can tell this intrigues me, right?
Yeah, no. What happens is the fiscal year ends in July, July first. So six months prior to that, Metro puts their budget together. This is what they're asking. They're asking for this total, and it's very detailed. This amount goes to this bureau. This amount goes to this bureau. This is what we want to, this is a number of personnel.
Is the gang unit still on task or not?
You know, I'd have to look that up. I don't know if it's a fully functional gang unit, or if it's just an intelligence unit. I'm not sure. So they put their budget together, and they ask for X amount of dollars, and they show us exactly where it's going. We take that budget and we give it to the city manager and the county manager to siphon through the details. Do they, and there's a negotiation, and there's been plenty of times where Metro did not get what they asked for because we don't have the money. So they go through that negotiation process, and then eventually, the sheriff, the county manager, and the city manager say, you know what? This is pretty reasonable. We can handle this. And then they would bring it to, then they would bring it to Fiscal. Well, then they would, each, the city council and the county commission would then vote on it because they're voting on their own budgets, which include their portion for Metro. And then that would go to Fiscal Affairs for final approval. So, but keep in mind, the budget for the city of Las Vegas, almost seventy percent goes to some form of public safety. So that would include Metro's budget, the Department of Public Safety for the city, the city jail, the courts, the six municipal courts. So sixty percent of our budget goes to some form of criminal justice. I don't know what the county's is, but it's probably about the same. So, and that's because that's the priority of the citizens. So our budget for Metro, I believe, is about a hundred and eighty million dollars. And our budget, our total budget's about five hundred million dollars. So a hundred and eighty to five hundred just goes to Metro. And then we have to fund the rest of public safety infrastructure for the city of Las Vegas. So we're already spending quite a bit on public safety.
Have you had any interest of serving on the Southern Nevada Water Board?
You know, I know that we have people on there. I can't tell you if I'm interested or not interested.
How about the Las Vegas Visitor Authority?
Las Vegas Convention and Visitor Authority. I never really had any interest in sitting on that board.
Why is that? He's like, I'm not a PR guy.
You know, I like dealing with local stuff. I mean, not that that's not local, but I like dealing with public safety stuff. Transportation is, I'm very interested in because I was the captain for the Traffic Bureau for two years. So I learned a lot about transportation. And transportation is, that's a big deal for people. They want to make sure that we have great roads to drive on. They're safe. There's pedestrian walkways. So that's.
Make sure their buses show up on time.
And yeah, you know, there has to be some public transportation, absolutely. So the LBCBA deals with more conventions and the strip. And I just, it was never really at the top of my list. I've never asked to be on it.
So you're into parks and schools?
I love parks, yep.
Coffee with a cop?
I love Coffee with a Cop. I love parks.
It's funny that you bring that up, Councilman, because when people start talking to me about my overall political philosophy, and I said, look, I got a lot, but I'm not going to get too far into the weeds. I said, if you really want to know what I want government to do for me, is I want roads so I can get to work. I want to be able to do it safely. And when I go to bed at night, I really don't want a bomb dropping on my head. So as long as government can do those two things, I'll take care of the rest of it myself. Just stay the hell out of my hair.
You know, you are spot on. You are.
Councilman, being a county commissioner, they say, is one of the second most powerful jobs in this state. Because you got governor and you got the county commission. And the county commission for Clark County, they say, that's a powerful position. Not like Washoe, just Clark County.
Right.
What do you see is wrong with District C? Because that's what you're running for. That's where you're going to get your votes. That you feel that you need to come in and fix or amend or what have you? What's going on with District C that you need to address immediately?
Well, I wouldn't say that there's something wrong in District C. I think the way, the better way to say it is the things in District C need to be maintained. It's, and the growth, the growth of District C, there's a lot of empty land up in District C.
Is it federal? Is it BLM? And not Black Lives Matter. I'm talking about Bureau of Land Management. You know, when I first heard somebody was talking to me, and they go, hey, do you know what's going on with BLM? I'm like, what does the Bureau of Land Management have anything to do with this? And they're like, they're looking at me like I'm crazy. They're like, no, Black Lives Matter. I'm like, oh, well, I guess I'm old school.
In today's conversation, you have to say Bureau of Land Management.
Right, okay. Like the WWF, instead of World Wrestling Federation, is World Wildlife Federation.
So that is important because there's going to be BLM land that's going to be annexed into the city and the county. That's going to happen. So the first thing is District C is, a lot of it's already planned out. It's already built. The houses have been built, infrastructure. So you just have to maintain it. You have to make sure that the roads stay in good shape. You have to make sure that the parks stay in good shape. You have to make sure that the neighborhoods stay in good shape. So that's a big part of just maintaining what has been built there to make sure that when people walk out of their front door in a house that they've lived in for twenty years, that they can still look around and say, hey, I really still, I've been here twenty years, and I really like living here still. I don't want to move. I enjoy living here. No, yeah. So that is, that's really number one. The second part is whatever land is released is built in accordance with the rest of the neighborhood. What should be built there? Because you're going to have developers coming in and wanting to build stuff. And it's the local government's job to make sure that it is compatible with the rest of the neighborhood. And even more important is you have to have neighborhood input. So if somebody wants to build something, and the neighbors say, you know what? That doesn't belong here. That doesn't fit in with our neighborhood. It doesn't fit in with already here. You have to listen to them. So those are the, those are the two most important issues when it comes to District C is good planning, good development, and maintenance of what's going on up there.
And being a city councilman and a county commissioner, you have your own ward and you have your own district. But most of the time, your votes affect the entire city, and now county commission, the entire county. And I wanted to know, when they widened the freeway over on West Charleston, Martin Luther King area there, there was buildings around that area. Did they do eminent domain to remove them? Did they pay them off? How does that work when a county and city wants to widen the freeway, and they call it a public health or safety or whatever? What do they do to the structure that already exists there? What happens?
So what you're actually specifically talking about, the city and county aren't involved in. That particular, the widening of freeways is NDOT, Nevada Department of Transportation, and the federal government.
But don't they come to the county or the city and complain, hey, I don't want to sell. I don't want to go?
They can, but it's the state and the federal government that's actually needs that land. The city and the county aren't the ones that are, that's not their project. So it happened with Project Neon. They would just come in and say, hey, we're going to build a freeway over your property, and we're going to impose eminent domain, which they have the right to do. It's in the Constitution. The question's going to be, how much are we going to pay you for it? So they will, they'll negotiate. And I don't think, and there was quite a bit of private property that was taken, but I don't recall any contentious issues between a property owner and the people that were building a highway. It sounds like people got paid what they should have been paid, and.
They were comfortable with it.
They were comfortable with it. So I don't think anything went to court. Because eminent domain can be a little, I mean, the city of Las Vegas was involved in an eminent domain situation with a Greek family. The Pappas family became a disaster, and that's why.
Don't mess with those Greeks.
And that's, since then, I don't think we've done any eminent domain at the city. So it's kind of a big deal when you take somebody's property. But if it's for a freeway, public use, things like that, people are usually okay with it, yeah.
So the current epidemic, this COVID thing, how do you guys maneuver through your, to get the job done for the people? How do you maneuver that? And as a county commissioner, what are your plans as far as this epidemic? And how you're going to move forward?
Well, the driving force behind COVID has been the governor. Governor issues directives, and we follow those directives. And that's kind of it. You know, whether you're a private citizen or you're a local government, he issues the directives, and we have to follow them. And we, my personal feeling is we have, we have to balance directives with not creating havoc in our economy. We kind of started out with just directives and not really thinking about the rest of the economy. We can't do that anymore. People have to go to work. People have to keep, open up their businesses. People have to get back to their livelihood. People have to be able to make money, especially when you read these horror stories about their unemployment checks. They can't get their unemployment checks for two months. I just feel sorry for somebody that gets put out of work because of these directives, and then they can't get an unemployment check for two months. I mean, I don't know how they're living. I feel so sad for these folks. So my philosophy now is we have to get the economy back. We have to get the economy back. We can do it safely. We have to let taverns start to open up. We have to let bars start to open up. We have to get bartenders back to work. Because these people are not making a ton of money, but they have to live. So that's got to be the move forward today, is the economy's got to come back.
So basically, if you get, when you get elected in November, so it'd be November of 2020. So you're not going to have a whole lot of time to run against Sisalak, or Sisalak, listen, Sisalak. And oust him because.
You ready nominated him for governor? I was going sheriff with him.
No, I'm on, I'm on him for governor. This guy, this guy is like, I'm like, I'm not going to put words in Steve's mouth, but Samson's mouth. I've known Steve Sisalak for a long time, but honestly, I just, like, I'm kind of putting you on the spot. But I think he's hoodwinked us all. He just seemed like a little bit leftist, centrist guy to me. And like, I'm really disappointed in him in this whole thing. So 2022, think about it.
So.
That's all I'm saying.
I understand, I understand that if, like, we had our last guest here who's running for Regent. I understand without education breeds crime and poverty.
Correct.
And I also understand if you shut down people's livelihoods, that also could breed crime and poverty.
Absolutely.
And with that said, you have, not you, you, but us. We have restaurants that are not even at fifty percent capacity. We have nightclubs that are shut down. We have nightclubs that are shut down, okay? And, and nightclubs bring a lot of money, especially those bottle services. Oh my God. So you got, and DJs were making what, six figures a night to do nightclub? So you got nightclub shut down. Not only you have nightclub shut down, you have all the adult industry shut down, like the, the strip clubs. And, and I'm sure the brothels are shut down up, up north. And, and, and then you have all these bars that are not serving food that are shut down. And how, how, how are we gonna bounce back and, and, and do you even? Maybe, maybe you're not the right person to ask this question. Maybe I should be asking the governor. But, 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 but he's, he already nominated you for governor, so I wanna hear your answer. So, I mean, but how, how, how are, are these industries gone? I mean, the massage parlors, gone? The lounges, gone? The bars, gone? The, the nightclubs, gone? That's where I used to go and, 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 and hang out with, meet some nice people at nightclubs. I mean, are these places gone, councilman?
Well, there are probably businesses, specific businesses that are gone. They're probably not gonna come back. So at the beginning, the focus was shut everything down. Shut everything down, shut everything down. Um, whether that was a good idea or not, we'll know probably a couple of years from now. The focus today has to be opposite. It has, it has to be open safely, open safely, open safely.
I agree with that.
Gotta open these places up. Uh, we gotta put people back to work and the, we're not focused there yet. We're still kinda stuck in the, uh, keeping everything closed. Um, you know, uh, people are talking about another shutdown. There's no way we could have another shutdown. The, uh, we would destroy everybody if we did that. So uh, the focus has to, the philosophy has to shift to open things up safely. And we're just, I don't think we're there doing that yet. And that's what we're, that's what I wanna do on the, uh, at a local government, is try to get these businesses to open up and try to loosen up these directives. But again, I'm not making the directives. So we have to kinda work with what the governor is doing.
Well, councilman, it, it's been just magnificent talk with you. And, 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 and I, and I got like a hundred more questions, but.
I'm sorry for putting you on the spot like that. Sorry for venting in the middle of your interview. That was kinda rude of me. I apologize.
And, and I understand during this whole interview, I'm, I'm, I'm nominating you for sheriff. And, and Jim Jonas over here is nominating you for governor. So you, you gotta be a good guy because we're, we're very critical on, on people, especially elected. And, and you've known us for years. Could you look into the camera and tell people why, why that they need to go and vote for Stavros Anthony for Clark County Commission District Number C? That they need to fill out their little, that little bubble next to your name and put it in the secure sleeve envelope? And I, and I gotta keep repeating myself because people miss it. And, and, and put it in that envelope with that says US postage and sign the front of the envelope and print their name on it and seal and drop it in the mail before November third or before seven PM. Why it is so important to put you in that seat and your point of contact?
Well, before I do that, I wanna thank you for having me on. And I, I will say you, you two asked good questions. I mean, you really, you really get down to the substance of questions that allow me to answer them. And you don't have any notes. So I appreciate you doing that. I wanna thank you for having, uh, for giving me your endorsement. And uh, um, and, and number three is, um, please don't give your ballot to anybody else. Make sure you receive your ballot, make sure you fill it out, make sure you get it to the election department the way you want to. Don't pick up, don't let anybody else have your ballot. That's ballot harvesting. Do not let anybody do that. We have to have a, uh, an election that people can be confident in. So please do that. So with that, uh, again, my name is Stavros Anthony. I'm running for the Clark County Commission District C. And I will tell you, um, on the Clark County Commission, I will do exactly what I've done the last ten years on the Las Vegas City Council. And that's make sure that my priorities are public safety. Making sure you have great neighborhoods to live in, making sure that you have great roads to drive on. Making sure that when you walk out of your front, you know, your front door, that you look around and say, I'm proud of my neighborhood. And that's because, uh, Stavros Anthony, my elected local official, uh, when I called him with about an issue, that he took care of it. So I will commit to you that whatever, that my job is to go out in the community and your neighborhood, find out what is bothering you, what local government should be doing on a county level. And I will take care of that and make sure the county resources are there to make sure that you have a great place to live, great place to work, great place to raise your family, walk your dog. Uh, that's my commitment to you. Stavros Anthony, Clark County Commission District C. My cell phone is seven oh two eight one two zero one two three. You can call me personally. Uh, my email is Stavros Anthony at, at gmail dot com. And my website is Stavros Anthony for District C dot com. My email's Stavros Anthony at gmail dot com. Yes. So contact me if you have any questions. If you'd like to make a campaign contribution, you can do it online. Uh, and I would appreciate your vote in November when you personally take that envelope and put in your ballot and make sure it gets safely to the election department.
Well, councilman, thank you so much. Folks, that's uh, Councilman Mayor Protemp Stavros Anthony, who's a candidate for Clark County, County, Clark County Commission District Letter C. We have known Councilman Anthony for over a decade now. And um, I, I know him personally that I, every time I pick up the phone and, and I call and I say, hey, councilman, this is wrong. Could, could we do this? He's always there. He's always there to help. He has never, ever let me down or anybody that I know of. He, he has never let anybody down that I know of. Um, Councilman Anthony is, is for the people. He has been on, in local government for many, many years. He knows the job well. There'll be a smooth transition from city council right into the Clark County Commission. And he'll be a star there. This is, this is the type of person you want on the Clark County Commission. Again, Stavros Anthony, Clark County Commission District Number C. This is Steve Sanson, Jim Jonas with Veterans in Politics. Until next time.